Okay, we're all set to call the meeting in the order. First item on agenda is approval of the agenda.
Some move to approve the proposed agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is to be heard. Seeing none, now we'll go on to payment of the bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we'll go on to Marine. Our Historical Society, the report.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. We just appreciate the opportunity to come in and say thank you for all the wonderful support that we get from the Clay County Commission. So I sent a report ahead with various details there. And as you can see, 2015 was a very good year. As I was writing this up, I thought, wow, we actually got quite a lot done. And we're still doing quite a lot, so I'm very pleased. And that is because we have a lot of extra support. And by extra support, I mean the city of Morehead giving us the in-kind space and utilities with a value of $371,000. Again, just to reiterate, the city owns the Yemcom Center, the city owns the ship and the church. And they take all revenue from room rentals, church rentals, that sort of thing. However, they ask us to run the museum and we get to keep all the admissions. So it is a collaborative effort, very much so. And then, of course, I want to thank the Clay County taxpayers for $189,000 last year. The support really helped pay salaries, but in particular, supported our mission of collecting, preserving, interpreting, and sharing the history and culture of Clay County, which is what we do. We shared it with over 30,000 people over the year. That's 27,000 visitors to the museum, plus another 3,000 throughout the year, free public presentations that the three historians Mark, Mark Peal, Lisa Vita, and Marcus Krieger presented to throughout the community. Mark Peal alone did over 100 presentations in 2015 off-site, which he is pleased to do, always happy to do, and is always so warmly welcomed. He does a great job. Rather than dwell a lot on the particulars of the report, which you can see, I do want to let you know that the wonderful balance at the end does have to do with our grants. We actually put the grants in a separate savings account, so we don't have extra money, a lot of extra money at the end. That is grants that are in savings for 2016 projects. So that amount has continued to pay for salaries to continue the project of getting our entire archive into PassPerfect, which is an electronic history database that is then indexed and put online so that researchers in Timbuktu can look up what kind of resources we have. And we really do have requests for information from all over the world. It's quite fun to get the email from Scotland or the email from wherever, having a question on a family member or some track of land. And Mark is usually able to answer their questions, so. Rather, I'd like to tell you a couple of quick stories. One is that right now, even as we speak, 183 fourth graders are making their way to the museum, all at the same time. That is quite an undertaking, I can tell you. This month alone, the month of May is group school tour month, and we'll have almost 2,000 children to see the museum just in this month. Marcus Krieger is our education person, and he takes care of all the groups. He does the logistics of taking seven classes of kids, putting them into six groups, creating six different stations for them to go to in half-hour increments throughout a three-hour period. So there is a chart that just goes bing, 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 bing. And the staff, six different staff, are on duty. Mark Peal is in the archives, and he spends a half an hour talking about Clay County archives and what treasures you can find out about your own family and your own history. And inevitably, a couple of people, a couple of children will linger in the archives, and then we know those are our future historians. So it's real fun to see who catches fire when they come to the archives. It's quite a logistics challenge, but if everyone cooperates, it goes very smoothly, and the teachers are normally quite thrilled. They give us a lot of positive feedback on that. Another quick story that was interesting in 2015, I believe it was the auditor's office called trying to track down two women. They had an inheritance to give these two women, and they needed to locate them, so they called Mark. And by golly, Mark tracked them down through genealogy, remember that? And he found them, and they were very surprised and delighted to learn that they had each gotten an inheritance, but also that they had a brother that they didn't even know existed. And those kinds of really heartwarming stories actually happen pretty regularly. Mark is a unique resource in the county, and he sure comes through for a lot of people. The third thing has to do with 2016, and that is that we will, in May, we've been invited to go out to the Thorpe Vet family farm with descendants and to gather together the resources that they have, the artifacts that they have from the early pioneer days. Levi Thorpe Vet was one of the original Buffalo River settlement pioneers, one of the first white settlers in Clay County. And his daughter, Orabel Thorpe Vet, was also an artist and a historian. And they are going to share with us all of her journals, some of the pioneer artifacts, all of her paintings. And we're very excited about that. The Thorpe Vet family won the Clay County Heritage Award in 2014 because, as a family, they have preserved history for generations. From Levi Thorpe Vet's original daily journal as a pioneer, we are able to know what pioneer life was like, what the weather was like, the kinds of things that pioneers did on a daily basis. And then, when his daughter came along and took over, we have much more elaborate detail. Orabel, whenever she visited someone's house in the county, she would draw a little outline of their house with all the rooms outlined. So houses that are long gone, we have a little footprint of. And then, she was meticulous about who are your people. She would write down the genealogy of every person she met. And Mark actually uses these handwritten journals to do genealogy work for people in the county. Where there are no other records, Orabel Thorpe Vet's journals provide the information. It's very, very cool. Plus, she illustrated them with watercolors, so it's an artistic experience as well. So the ways that we serve Clay County, we collect, preserve, interpret, and share their history and culture. We have a large Clay County history exhibit, which we mount, right now, we've been mounting it every two years. And that is at the request of teachers. Teachers have asked us to leave our big exhibit up for two years so they can plan ahead and help them with their curriculum, so they can plan a museum visit into their curriculum. This year, it's about alcohol, and it's about everything from Wild West days to prohibition. And unfortunately, the fourth graders are not able to see that exhibit, the teachers decided, but the parents can always bring their kids back. However, they are seeing everything else. All of the high school students have been coming to see that exhibit, so. We also have the presentations in the community, the research, genealogy, and then, of course, the education of children. All Clay County children who come as classes get in for only $2 per person. It's a special rate just for Clay County classes. So I know very quickly, plans for 2016, we have our three cultural heritage festivals. In June, we celebrate Scandinavian culture, and September, German culture, and in November, it is our multicultural festival. We do not do the Celtic Festival, however, we take full credit for it. We get full credit for it, but that is the city's parks departments. We are processing backlog of artifacts, and that means that it's an ongoing process. All of the donations take, you have to handle, measure, write down their stories, photograph, and then create the right home for them, depending on what kind of object they are. We are developing our internship program. Concordia now has museum studies. MSUM's history department and NDSU's public history department have been sending us wonderful, wonderful undergraduate interns. And NDSU's public history program is sending us excellent graduate students as well. We are impacted by North Dakota economics in that we're awaiting word for how NDSU will be impacted in terms of our graduate assistantships, because NDSU is paying part of the fee to have the students come and work at our museum. We are celebrating Mark Peal's 30th anniversary all year long in small increments, because he doesn't like a big fuss, but we're throwing a cake whenever we can. And also, on July 19th, we will be celebrating the 30th anniversary of the Yemcom Center itself as a community icon, as a community center. It's been 30 years since that building was built, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a comment. I saw the saloon display there, and my father was in the liquor business in Morehead. He and his brother had the Black Hawk, which closed in '72 due to urban renewal. But his father had a saloon during that time, turn of the century later. That gentleman died in 1917, and I believe it was 1915, it went dry. And then, of course, that business, those businesses just folded. But I found it very interesting, and I also want to compliment Mark Peal. I've been there a couple of times, and he's been very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, and there was just a presentation on the wet and dry and the volunteer dinner there that we had last month. And I don't know if we ever were dry.
Yeah, exactly. Dry.
It sounded like there was a lot of stuff going on. It was a very interesting presentation there, and some good stuff coming up.
Lots of interesting things.
And one more. I had Robert Asp, he's a seventh grade math teacher.
Oh, wow.
Hundred years ago.
Yeah.
In 1957.
At least.
Yeah. And very, very fine guy.
And his dream continues to be the theme of the Yemcom Center. Dare to Dream is really our catchphrase over there, because it is. It's just an unusual and interesting place where people prove that one person can do unusual things if they just have enough support, so.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for this presentation, and keep up the good work there.
Thank you very much.
Want to replace accounting technician job? Good morning, Lori.
I do have a .8 accounting tech retiring in June, and I would like to replace it with a full-time person. This person has been here for, the current person in this position has been here for quite a while and has known the job. And as social services caseload increases, so does this position's. And so while we were able to handle it, we were just teetering on the edge right now of almost making that full-time again with this person that's been there for a long time. But with a new person in, you know, it's just no doubt that it's going to be really tough even at a full-time position, so. I'm requesting that it be full-time and replaced, and this year, I'll be short money, but next year, it'll be a savings of approximately $5,000.
So. Well, second, I have a question. Lori, do any of your accounting positions receive reimbursement compensation from the state for their work?
This position actually files those claims.
Okay.
And the filing of those claims was up 16% in 2015 from '14.
So she files it on behalf of the?
Of the county.
Of the social services department?
Right.
But does her position itself qualify?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we've got a motion to move from .8 to full-time. That is what you wanted there, right?
Yes, correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Diane, that's going to give us a report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm going to give you a little report of last year, and then also the compliance recommendations, because we have our meeting. So, and on your packets, I had attached a little synopsis of some of the things that the recorder's office does, and I thought I'd just run through that real quick for the public. We do vital records, and that includes birth records and death records. And that is our birth records that we have for genealogy. It was kind of interesting to hear the genealogy. We have those from like the 1800s in our department. And the state is running, we're a satellite of the state of Minnesota. They have all the birth records from 1935 forward. And the death records, we are also a satellite now of the state of Minnesota, and they have the death records from '97 forward. So we can supply death records and birth records as long as people have tangible interest for anybody who was born in Minnesota or they died in Minnesota. And marriage licenses, anyone can apply in Clay County and get married anywhere in the state of Minnesota. And marriage certificates, that's been quite popular right now as people are retiring. They have to prove how their name has changed. And so anybody who was applied in this in Clay County, we can provide that. Otherwise, we have a statewide program where we can kind of steer the people and tell them, well, this is where it appears that you applied. And that's called the Acronym M-S-M-O-M-S, Minnesota Official Marriage Systems. So that's worked out really well. When somebody comes to our counter, we can help them instead of just saying, sorry, you didn't apply here, you know, you're going to have to call the other counties and find out. Notary filings, if you're going to be a notary in Clay County, they have to come to our county. They file with the state of Minnesota and pay their fee, and then they come to Clay County, and then we record it. And marriage ordinations, a number of years ago, I think Bonnie had come to the board to ask for a fee for people who are going to marry couples, and we do file that, and there's a fee for that. That's about, a lot of the stuff for vitals records, and we also do, like I mentioned before, genealogy, so they can come into our office and do some genealogy. And we do real estate, so that's one of the main things that we do. We record the documents, all of the documents for real estate in Clay County, of course, is recorded in Clay County. We record state and federal tax claims. We record the military discharges, that's a free fee, and that's restricted. Only the person, the veteran, can get that from our office. And if there's other family members who are qualified, we always refer them to the VSO, Veteran Service Office, to get that. So the only time we do a certified military discharge is if it's a veteran themselves. Otherwise, we refer it to the VSO. We provide different types of reports for the public, and that is at a cost. We have five public stations for people who want to do research, and that's pursuant to our statute 386.17, that we have to make our facility open to anybody who wants to come into our office to do research. We provide public, the homeowner, with a copy of their deed if they come up or if they call us, we'll email it to them. We sell county plot books for minimal cost. We just break even with it, it's not a moneymaker. And we just wanted to point out that if you need to get a certified divorce decree, that is down in court administration, it is not in our office. And one of the other things that we do not do, passports. We used to, but we do not. And we're trying to get that. It's not on our website, but if somebody puts in, we're to get a passport, it still pops up Clay County. We try to get that changed, but it's really hard to get some of this stuff changed. And we do offer free service. We have plots, corner certificates, and surveys online. So that's, Kimberly Savage over our office had prepared that, so I just wanted to thank her for doing that.
Now, all this stuff is on the website, too?
Yes.
People find out about it.
Yes, they can find it on the website nationally. Like for, I'll talk about our marriage license. We have links tied, so if they hit the link, it'll pop them into, sometimes to another website.
Okay.
Diane, you started off by saying that you wanted to mention this for the public, and I'm glad that you state that, because a lot of times, we forget that it's not just a little group sitting on this table.
Right.
It's everybody watching that also wants to know this stuff. And so for you to recognize that and to get into that detail, I like it.
Oh, thank you. So accomplishments in 2015, we were able, with the help of Dave at the highway department, we worked together. He had to get his credit card to work with RT Vision, so then we kind of piggybacked onto that. So our credit card service changed from the $3.95 fee down to $1.95. The public has received that quite well, so it's working really well. Because that is something, he eats the fee, we have to charge that, because all of our fees are pretty much mandated by the state of Minnesota. And we have to, about the vitals monies that we collect, about two-thirds of that money goes to the state. So a birth record, for instance, is $26, we get nine of that for the county. Death records are $13 for the first one, we get $4 for that. Marriage licenses are either 40 for reduced or 115, and we get $25 of that. Just like the real estate documents, too. We don't give the state, we don't have to give the state as much real estate dollars that we get as we do with the vitals, but about two-thirds of the monies for our vitals go to the state of Minnesota.
Well, don't we keep the record here, too? And they keep the same record that we keep, then, huh?
The which record?
Well, you're talking about the vitals and all those that we charge, and we only get so much in there.
Actually, the state has the records now.
Okay.
We have some of the older ones.
Okay.
Because we have no hospital anymore, so we don't have any births recorded here. And they keep all of the death records at the state of Minnesota now. So we're a satellite of them, we have to. If their website goes down, we can't get anything for them. And so that's worked really well with the credit cards. Our marriage application process was streamlined last year in July. There's a link on our website that goes to Minnesota Official Marriage Systems. The couple, when applying, they can go in, go online and apply, and they hit submit, and it is not processed, and the time does not start until they come into our office. And we approve their identity, and they have to pay the fee. And so that's starting to work really well. And then, we also do have a couple of computers dedicated for the online marriage applications. It used to be they would fill it in in handwriting, and it would be so hard later on to try to decipher what their names are, their birth dates, because sometimes people don't have very good handwriting. So this way, everything is auto-populated, it streamlines, it makes our department more lean, and it's working really quite well. And with real estate, one of our main focuses, of course, with real estate is the timely recording of our documents, either by paper or by e-recording. We're still e-recording at about 30%, I think. And the e-recording of documents takes place through trusted submitters. Only certain companies, we have a contract with them, and they're the, excuse me, they're the only ones who can submit e-recording documents. We don't have any problem getting money, because with that, it's an ACH payment. And like I put down here, about two-thirds of our funds that we get now are ACH to us. I did, just this last month, I asked one customer, I discontinued one customer, and it just, they weren't supplying enough e-recording for the mono work that was taken to try to balance their account. They just didn't quite have it. And so we just parted ways. And that works, that works fine. So now, I'm to the point of our compliance. Pursuant to Minnesota statute 257.182, the Clay County Recorder's Office has met compliance requirements of 2015. So our compliance funds can be dispersed, and we met on May 3, 2016, and I attached the kind of funds that we were going to. The really good thing was last year, when I came to you, we didn't think we were going to have enough compliance funds, and we might have had to go to the general revenue to ask for some funds, because we promised to pay for the CAMA system. But we were able to, we had enough compliance funds, and we actually had a balance of $12,000 at the end of 2015 instead of a deficit. I did not want to come to you commissioners again with that kind of. So what we did is, I proposed that for 2017, because our '16, we had approved, 2017, we're going to do same, same. I propose that we might collect $105,000, so we'll spend $105,000. It's kind of like the technology fund. If we collect $100,000, we can spend $100,000. It just makes more sense instead of spending more. And it's proposed budget of $32,000 left. And I'm comfortable with that, I hope you commissioners are, too. It just, I don't like to say we might be at a deficit. And so what we did was, I think for '17, pretty much, we kept everything the same, and we're going to supply about $25,000 hopefully to the remonumentation program, which will help the budget, part of the $40,000 budget for survey. That was kind of one of the new things that we had added. And we went back, we have the assessors maintenance that we're paying for again, and then technology and information systems and the tax system.
So I have a question for, maybe either for Diane, or Grant, or maybe Brian. I noticed that the auditor's tax position salary, which had been paid out of there for 10 years, is no longer in the 2017 proposal.
Right.
Is that, so Lori's aware of that, so her budget will increase by that amount, then? Because that position's still there.
It was Lori's suggestion.
Okay.
Because of some changes that might be happening and not at the top.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was just wondering why, after 10 years, all of a sudden, it would be pulled out, wanted it still an active position, and it would qualify for the funds.
Right.
Right? It's still, Brian, do you?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I was not able to attend this meeting, but Lori did talk to me, and Diane did talk to me as well. And no, she doesn't plan to have asked for that to be replaced by general funds. That position may go away.
Oh.
May.
Okay.
So that's her intent, anyway.
Okay. Because it's one of the few positions that actually would have qualified for reimbursement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she's making some changes, or there will be some more changes in her office, put it that way, so she's thinking.
As long as somebody's discussed it, that's, okay.
Any other questions, sir? One further thing I'd just like to say, it's always been a concern of mine, backup of our documents, backup of our documents. And we have different sites now for our real estate documents, because if catastrophe happens, you know, we have to be up and running. Our software company has offered a program, which they will host our documents in another state. And I've talked to our IT people, and they are all for it. The subscription-based Laredo that we use, that people pay money for, won't be coming off of our servers anymore, it'll be off of this company's server.
It'll be off of this company's servers. So it's just a win-win.
So is that similar to just when they refer to the cloud?
I, yeah, yeah.
But the cloud is, I mean, it can be on a, on a system anywhere.
But it's, yeah, they actually keep the records in another state.
Yeah.
And it'll pull from another server, so we maybe won't be bogged down as much. But of course, there's a fee connected to it, and that will come out of our technology funds. So it's, and, and got the, they were really excited, IT and GAS, that I could do something like that.
Well, then that, that would make a lot of sense to do that.
Yeah, they don't have a price. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Do we need to approve the committee's recommendations?
I think it would be good.
I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Approve the compliance committee recommendations.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All fair and, I post.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good report.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll go on to Churches United. Darlie, how many people you bringing with you here? It looks like a group.
Do you want more than three, like, in another chair?
That's honest.
We have a good support system in the back in case we are getting in trouble. We'll call them up as reinforcements.
Is that Jenny?
I'm Jenny. And I have my intake. I'm here as the Churches United Board President.
Okay.
That's my role of the day.
Okay, you got a housing project you want to talk about?
Yeah, so, good morning. I'll just preface it with, last June, I think it was, the board passed a resolution supporting the, well, actually, the resolution was relating to the county's involvement with the Churches United project that they were proposing. And so they're moving along in the process, so I asked them to come and give an update to the board about what's happening with the project. And then as a part of the process, the Minnesota Housing Finance Association is requesting an updated letter of commitment, I think is what they call it. And that was supplied in your board packet from the county. So it's pretty similar to what we did back in June. But I would intend to, I've completed the, the form, and that would be submitted by Churches United to Minnesota Housing Finance Association with your approval. So I think Jenny was going to talk a little bit about how things are going.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Jenny, and I'm the Support Services Director at Churches United with all this. I've worked at Churches United for the past three and a half years, and I have had the privilege to work with the, the people coming into the shelter seeking help as their last resort. And our mission at Churches United is to provide support and shelter in a spiritual setting. And our goal is really to help people address the root cause of homelessness and help them increase their incomes in connecting the residents to community services with the goal of housing stability. There are many reasons why people come through our doors, and those who are chronically homeless have ongoing health issues, criminal convictions, evictions, chronic substance abuse, and broker-in relationships. A startling statistic from the Wilder Research in two thousand thirteen found that over forty-six percent of individuals in our homeless population are impacted by mental health. And of those forty-six percent, eighty percent of them had ongoing other issues as well, including substance abuse, diabetes, heart-related complications. So providing housing stability with support services has shown across the United States that it actually drops the costs of psychiatric hospitalizations and the use of emergency rooms. Another layer to this difficult topic is the number of children affected by homelessness. Over twenty percent of our homeless population is made up by children. And the Wilder survey continues to show that homelessness is a significant problem in our area. Despite the many efforts of strengthening housing opportunities and services, the supply for permanent supportive housing is not adequate to meet among the poorest of our population. So with that, Churches United is making steady progress on our forty-three unit building. We're hoping to break ground by fall of this year. And so the state did award us the seven point four million in construction. In last June, the Clay County Board passed a resolution for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, acknowledging the need for permanent supportive housing and pledging project-based GRH funding for the development if legislation changes allow such use. The next step of the process is required for us to close on the financing. So we're seeking approval of the forty-three GRH state-funded beds. And that would be at a housing rate of eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, with the supplementary services of four hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents, with a contract start date of July first of two thousand sixteen. As you can see, or two thousand seventeen, excuse me. As you can see, big things are happening at Churches United, and we are really excited about this and your continued acknowledgement and as appreciated, and your support. Without community partners like you, we were unable to effectively provide services. And as I was working on putting my thoughts together, a quote from Margaret Mead kept coming to mind, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. So we thank you.
You mentioned there, a lot of people come here with mental health issues and stuff like that. So how do you handle that? I mean, what, what, do you have a facility or what? How do you handle people like that?
So at Churches United, we have case managers on staff, and we would have case managers on staff at Churches United at the, at our Thirty Fourth Street property as well. And we really try to bring a wraparound services, and that's where GRH is a great thing. We provide, it's called ARMS, which is for people experiencing like mental health. There's ARMS worker, case worker, that can go with them to appointments, help them set up appointments. And our goal would have at least a nurse on hand for like fifteen, twenty hours a week at our Bright Sky apartment building to help address anything.
I mean, and I'm kind of GRH geek. I don't, I don't know if anybody else is a group residential housing geek. But just so that you know, the basic eligibility criteria, it's a state-funded resource. The county does administer it, so there's the cost on the administration end for the county. But all of the funding is actually straight one-hundred percent state of Minnesota funds. But to be eligible for that, you need to meet a basis of eligibility. The primary one is a disabling condition as determined by the Social Security Administration or the equivalent thereof. There are also some general assistance categories of eligibility. And one of the preferences that we've put in place for this development are for individuals who are over the age of fifty-five and homeless. Unfortunately, senior homelessness is a growing population in our community and one that we are seeing repeatedly. And as, sorry about the fifty-five age limit. That's what the state put in, not me. Because you could be disabled or aged fifty-five or older with challenges in seeking employment for that GRH. But really, this will be a safe landing spot for folks whose health has deteriorated oftentimes, and they're suffering from disabling conditions that limit their ability to work at a level in order to live independently, and then they also need those supports in the units. So we're really excited about that. I said, it's very sad that as baby boomers become into that age range, we're seeing a growing and growing population in that area. And we really think that we're on the cutting edge of doing some great things to prevent that senior homelessness.
Yeah, to start off, the, originally, the county's role in this project was, its, its only role in this project was to tell the, the state that, yes, these beds were needed. That was our primary purpose, dysfunction of this board. Now the function now moves to, because we are the little brother of the state of Minnesota when it comes to the funding and all of that stuff, to, to show our support that, yes, indeed, of the dollars that we have, that come into Clay County for the purpose of housing, that we are assuring Churches United that dollars will be available for that facility.
As long as the people are eligible.
As long as the people are eligible, right? So, yeah, so that, now, but on the, when we're saying that there's a payment rate per bed of eight ninety-one, that's up to, I suppose, that, now, are some, do some of these have a in kind, if they're able to, do they, they also pay then, too, correct? If they're, if they have the ability to?
Residents only keep ninety-seven dollars per month of their income. Every other dollar that they receive from social security or anything contributes to this total. And so oftentimes, that eight ninety-one is only two hundred and seventy dollars.
That's, it's good.
And it's not just for housing.
People need to know this.
Yes. It also covers things like toilet paper, paper towels, cleaning supplies, laundry. That's not like a rent charge. It's room and board.
So that, but the, but the counties, now, do, do, do any of our local dollars go into that, or is it all?
No.
So, so when, when we go in there and we talk about this number of eight ninety-one, or there's a number here of forty-two eighty-four, it's all subject to whatever the state is. That's our responsibility as a county to, to, to pay Churches United whatever that state rate is that we get.
Right. Yeah, the state sets a maximum rate, and generally, that will change in July. So, you know, it, one of the things we, I talked about, thought about is putting up to the eight ninety-one or as approved.
Well, you know, like, just like we, like we do on simple things like our, our per diems for federal gas rates, or what, why don't, why don't we just have a policy that, that says that we will pay the state rate, whatever that is?
Right.
And so if it goes up, it goes up. If it goes down, it goes down. Then we're, you know, that's what we do with our per diems or our mileage rates. Because it's all based on, on where, somebody's done those studies.
It'd be up to that state rate and as approved on those individual bases, based on individual client income.
Right, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what we have in front of us is today, you're looking for just a re-establishment of our support. Is that correct?
You know, I don't actually think any action is necessary on behalf of the commission. We wanted to be able to be available to answer any questions you might have about the development.
You just did. Thank you.
If I can go back then one more thing, and Darlie, as you, as you know, a year ago, or whatever it was, two years ago, this project, it was a controversial project.
There was some excitement surrounding, yes.
Yeah, we all know that. And the, the area that I still hear from is the area directly to the west of you that, and I've talked to you about this before, the, they call up their fifty-five and over.
Pineview cottages?
Yeah, their community there. And right now, as far as I know, the city of Morehead does not have any public thoroughfare that would go from your lot. In other words, whether it be sidewalk or street, there's nothing that goes through that development over there. And, you know, out of the concerns from, that had been addressed from, from those folks, you know, they said to me, are they going to at least be able to have a fence or something there that would not allow them to just be walking through their backyards? That's a huge concern to them, and I, and I happen to think that's an appropriate concern to have. Because they might want to do a shortcut to the Ameri, to the American Legion or something, you know, and so they want. So what, what are you looking at? Are you looking at doing anything there to?
Yes, and our interim executive director, Liz Quapla, is here in the audience. And she is the median extensively with the residents from Pineview.
Okay.
Because we want to be able to address and mitigate their concerns to whatever degree that we are able to.
Okay.
We did push the building back off their property line to the extent that we could. I believe it was eighty feet that we were able to move it back.
Further to the east, then?
Yes, towards the east, because they had some concerns about, they didn't want their sun blocked.
Right.
And we wanted to accommodate that to the greatest degree possible. We're working with them on, you know, fencing. You know, what would be an attractive option that will work for everybody.
Okay.
We're working with the city of Morehead and their engineering department on the design of the access into the, into the development and out, and none of that.
That's from Thirty Fourth Street, right?
Yes, from Thirty Fourth Street. None of that involves going through Pine. So we are, we are trying to work with them to the greatest degree possible. We will never make one hundred percent of the residents happy, but we're doing the best we can.
You know, I, I've taken enough calls from some of them that, quite frankly, just don't want you there.
Right.
And that's, that's not their choice, but the, you know, probably we can do is to, you know, like you said, listen to their concerns, and, and one of the things maybe would be to, to make it so that it just isn't an open area to, for them to just walk through their properties.
And we're certainly trying to address it, yes.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Are you at the point where you can discuss what, what your dreams are for the land that you will be using on that property? What are the hopes and dreams for that?
Right now, our hopes and dreams are to sell the remainder of the property. We are not looking at doing any additional development by Churches United at this time. We do have some, some fantasy partners, which would be very complimentary to the area, we believe, and to the services and intention of permanent supportive housing. But after the engineering for the entire ten acres is determined, we will then be submitting a plat design to the city of Morehead through their planning department, and then marketing the properties actively for sale.
So what's the acreage total?
It's ten acres, eight buildable acres. We're using about two and a half of those buildable acres. We certainly will put in covenants on the land to restrict certain uses. No, strip clubs or, you know, anything inappropriate like that. We're not looking for that type of a neighbor. And so we will, we will put in some restrictions as to the nature of who can purchase and develop. But it is zoned for multipurpose, so it could be commercial or it could be residential.
To follow up to Jenny's question, the, the, the seven million dollar funds that you got in, that was for the facility itself, wasn't, that wasn't for the land?
That, no, it will just be the portion of the land will be covered.
Okay.
So about a quarter of the land.
Okay, because that's what I was going to want. If you, I was wondering if you, if you sold that, would you have to give any of that back?
No, but we would like to pay off the mortgage on the existing land, which is one of the reasons that Churches United is looking to, to sell that.
Because you're going to have a mortgage, you're going to have a mortgage in addition to what you got from the state.
Correct, because I always want to be very clear that the state funding involves a five-point million dollar bond issue that is a deferred loan. There are no payments, no interest for a thirty-year period, but it is a loan on that property for five point eight million dollars. And that, an additional two point seven million dollars will come in from a private investor through the purchase of tax credits. So there will be a partner in the property who is a private enterprise tax investor. So when people get concerned about the quality of the product, we will have an investor who's putting over two million dollars into the project, who wants that to be a quality piece of real estate.
Very good. Thank you. That answers my question.
Anything else you got? Well, thanks for the update. Good luck on that project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to, are you going to give an update for this?
Yes, I believe that that will be going through the planning when we look at the planning.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Have a good day.
Okay, and with that, we'll move on to the feasibility study for methane gas. Kurt Rosenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How are you today?
We're going real good so far.
Uh-oh. You're making me a little nervous now.
Let's keep it that way.
I'll do the best I can. Dave Overbow is going to be with me, but he must've got caught up in the train, as he often does.
Very nicely put. Didn't he just have his review? Over early?
Yes. Oh, there he is, yeah, there you go. You got caught up in the train, right?
I was out in the hallway.
Oh, okay. All right, we, we're here to talk about the methane study for using methane to heat the joint highway department, solid waste department garage or building out at the landfill. We went to three different consultants to get a bid from them. And we, we received a bid from Burns and McDonald, who came up with a bid that was pretty, pretty good in our estimation. We met with the highway committee, Commissioner Gross and Campbell are part of that, and talked about it. The bid is basically for seventy-nine hundred dollars. And essentially, what we'll get is preliminary cost, as far as capital cost and O and M cost. And we'll also get some, some drawings as well. So with that, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, it seemed like their bid was pretty complete in helping us figure out what, what cost for future capital cost for methane equipment and piping, as well as their, their, you know, everyone's, everyone has to check the gas, so that's part of it, too. They got to see how much methane actually is in the, in the gas that comes out of the wells. They seem like they're very knowledgeable. They also provided a lot of information about another landfill that's doing this in Crow Wing County. And so, and we know they've got relative, been experienced, so I think the confidence level-wise was real good.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I think for, um, Commissioner Mojo, I, this was, um, a few years ago, we had, um, done a study on how much, um, gas could be generated there, because we were actually looking at seeing if we could provide it to Anheuser-Busch. And Anheuser-Busch actually, um, at that time helped pay for a study. But I can't remember the dollar amounts, what was a fairly significant dollar amount that?
Yeah, that was before my time, and I don't recall what the.
Yeah, that was when VJ was here, I'm sorry. But anyway, I think, you know, at that time, because originally there was the thought that we would be able to produce enough, and as it turned out, uh, we couldn't guarantee enough to them, you know, on a regular basis at the time. And so that study, obviously it was before Brian Stein, that were probably at least five years ago, then or six years.
Or more.
Or more, how long have you been here?
It'll be six in August.
Holy.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, yeah. Time flies when you're having fun.
Seems like twenty.
As you say, we've had you that long. But anyway, um, uh, so, you know, the purpose was to ultimately do something with that other than just flaring it off and bring it on a daily basis with the, we're even having to add a flare or two now, but, so, during our committee meeting, I, I actually felt that maybe they could've gotten enough information off of what's already been studied without doing this, but, uh, because it's a little bit old, we did agree to maybe have a second look at it from a different party. So our, our committee did, did fully support, um, this process and to have this new company look, look at the feasibility of doing it. And it's all, hopefully, hopefully it will make financial sense to, to do it. That's ultimately what we're looking for. So, so if, uh, I would, I would certainly move to authorize the, uh, study for the methane gas.
I got, I'll second the motion, do you have a comment as well?
Go ahead.
Uh, does your budget support the seventy-nine hundred?
It's, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, um, it's split evenly between the highway department and the solid waste department. We do have money in our budget for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm calling for the vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we'll go ahead with that study.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll see you tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Just a second, I got that other deal. This should be done, I'll catch you after.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on with Dave and Eric, uh, our supply bids, so we need to approve that bid though.
Yeah, was it Thursday, we opened bids on the yearly supplies, right here in this room. There's four different yearly supply bids that we open up. There's culverts, there's the rental of construction equipment. So those two items are pretty much prices that we use throughout the year. We don't really approve a low bidder, uh, we approve all bids in those areas for the rental of construction equipment, and then, uh, we usually get two, two people to provide prices for culverts, True North Steel and Content. So, um, I guess I would like to approve or recommend that we approve all the prices for rental of construction equipment and culverts like we have. And then the last two are furnishing of betuminous mixture, as well as the gravel bids. Now, those are actually, um, bids that we would like to get approved. Uh, the betuminous is kinda like the other ones, but there's actual, uh, there's only, there's four prices and there's four people there, so, again, I would like to, uh, recommend we approve all the different suppliers for the betuminous mixture as well. Uh, that's dependent on, on scheduling, you know, if someone's real busy and has all kinds of work, we usually don't try to sneak our trucks in line, because it takes too long. So there's flexibility here on location as well as scheduling. So I guess I would recommend we approve all those bidders as well. And then on the gravel bids, uh, we open those up, and those are a little more competitive. We've seen bids identical to this in the past, uh, we did get one bidder that got twenty-nine of the thirty townships, Turner Sand and Gravel, um, H and S Contracting got township number twenty-eight, I believe it is. Um, he's got some, some, uh, equipment and some gravel pits in the, kind of in the rolog area, so he could get to one there. I don't know if you want me to read all the prices for all thirty townships or not.
I think we got them before, thank you.
My, my interest in this, Dave, would be if, if we, if we see any significant changes from previous years in terms of what the bids are, right? Because we have no way here of knowing that, so, so.
Do you have a historical look?
Well, I, I think, I think maybe, maybe when you give your, when you bring these, 'cause, 'cause that's, that's a budgetary item, and, and so, for example, if the price per yard went up significantly.
Sure.
That would be something we'd, we'd wanna know.
Yep, absolutely.
But we don't, I can't tell it based on this, so.
I know last year's betuminous prices, I know it's after the fact, but it, these are about two dollars cheaper this year than they were last year, price of oil is down quite a bit. Uh, betuminous bids for contracting projects, you know, it just so happens we don't have any betuminous this year, but betuminous prices are almost ten-year lows right now. Would've been nice if we'd had our, uh, all of our paving for our bonding that we did.
Mm-hmm.
Would've been a perfect year to do that, this year. In fact, I've heard out in western North Dakota that they're actually bonding way ahead this year, trying to do the same thing. They're just, it's such good buys right now on betuminous, but. But I'll definitely do that in the future, gonna give you guys a snapshot on where things are from previous years.
So, so, so you said a two dollar, is that, is that like per ton?
Per ton, correct.
So, for, not for today, but is there, is there a way that you could take a look at? So we're, we're doing more betuminous next year?
Actually, we have a little bit, we have County Road Six, I believe, and that's, that all we have, I think that's all we have.
The, the point, the point.
Six is the only one of them.
The point being is if we, if we knew we had stuff coming up in the recent future, might we wanna sell fund and do it earlier if that two dollars is significant enough savings? So if you were, equate that out and say, well, yes, it's far more than we're gonna, than we're gonna do by having the money sitting in a bank collecting a half percent interest, then we should, we should be looking at doing that.
Yep.
Uh, provided that your, provided that your staff could move the.
Yeah, deliver the projects.
Move it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing to remember.
That we should be looking, if that's, if it's that significant, we should be looking at it.
Yep, true. Um, that's, you can make a very valid point. This, this material is just for road patching, you know, we take with our crews, show up and just haul gravel here and patch here and patch there, but the point that you make is very valid, and maybe I should put it on our next highway committee meeting to show the committee the prices that the neighboring counties are seeing for betuminous projects.
Betuminous patching is that way, wouldn't, wouldn't the overall asphalt and everything be?
It's way low, I mean, we.
Because of the oil prices?
Yeah, so the price on Wall Street, that we're gonna, we, we let that last fall. I think that's between forty-seven and fifty-two, depending on if it's the base or the workhorse. And I've heard other counties are getting in the range of the low thirties per ton, it's crazy low.
We need to look at that then. Because I'm sure we could, if there was something, we could look, talk to Lori, and you might be able to sell fund for a year on something, or something that's significant.
Yeah, we would love to add a few projects.
That could be considerable savings.
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at it head a little bit, but, uh, six is about the only one we're looking at paving until two thousand and nineteen.
The next, in seventeen, eighteen's the big year with ninety-five.
Yep.
Yeah, ninety-five.
Some of those projects would be hard to advance, because then.
You're not ready.
But, but there's overlay projects though, in two thousand and twenty, we could overlay anywhere on two, on County Road Thirty-three, I mean, we could advance some of those.
Well, we need to look at it, we need to look at it. So that's a topic we should do on the highway track.
Okay.
I didn't mean to, but I, when you said there were significant savings, all right.
Okay, right now, before us, we got, um, yearly supply bids.
I would move approval of the, uh, let's see, I'm gonna start with the, um, supply bids. So I'll move approval of all of the bidders.
Second.
Uh, this includes the betuminous and, uh, sand and gravel.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we got a motion.
Well, it's, no, it's the supply, yearly supply is, uh, and the, and the betuminous, that does not include, the gravel is a separate.
Okay, we'll just do the betuminous.
So the culverts, the betuminous, and the rental of construction equipment?
Yes, yeah, that's a combined motion there for those.
All in favor? Opposed? Or do you have a question, I'm sorry?
I thought, I didn't think we had a second, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yep, no.
Okay, motion passed.
So then, uh, maybe the next motion could be to approve Turner Sand and Gravel for townships, uh, one through twenty-seven and then twenty-nine and thirty, and then recommending H and S Contracting for township number twenty-eight for the gravel.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, and to go to the five-year plan that we discussed, uh, committed.
Yeah, we, this went through the highway committee a couple different times, as well as we did have a, a public, public input meeting. Received a lot of good, uh, people came in, and Frank, you were there, I thought that was a good meeting. We, uh, it wasn't real fast-paced, but we basically sat there and looked at our, our county map for probably forty-five minutes to an hour, and just had general discussion on different roadways, different parts of the county, and I thought it was real good, and, um, we, we never really used to do this in the past, so I think it's kinda catching on with some of the residents that have concerns with regard to highways, so.
Yeah, I think our counties are really getting involved in some of this stuff, and it's really good to see them, that they were at the meetings. It's good input.
So year twenty sixteen on our five-year plan is, is pretty well set, that's the projects we, uh, we're gonna open up a couple of them next weekend, County Road Ninety-five, I guess our county shop is next weekend too, but, uh, the only other projects, uh, that we haven't opened up or let yet would be County Road Six, Project Seven, and we have a couple of culverts on there that, um, I don't know for sure if we're gonna get bridge bond funds for those or not. Uh, I did, I did find out last week, though, that we will get funding for County Road One Seventeen, which is nice, because there must be a little bit of money in the bridge bond program left, and they're gonna fund us that one, so. It's kinda nice. Project number one, uh, is in limbo right now. I heard last night, I don't, I don't think at this point we will get money for County Road Fifty-seven Bridge, uh, but we do have a township bridge that we're just about done designing, so we will have actual one bridge to, uh, construct this summer, which will be nice, but.
So Dave, on that county, or on the Fifty-seven Bridge, uh, we had eighty thousand of county funding set aside. Will, will you divert that to something else, or will you hold that funding for that bridge?
I think I would hold that, because more likely we'll get, there will be, there will be a bridge bond fund eventually, and then we'll need that money, so.
Okay, so, so as soon as the, but the bridge bonding could still happen.
It, it could, yeah, very, very much.
Not this next ten, five or ten days or whatever.
Yep.
How did they pick just one bridge out of it, too?
Well, I, I, I begged a little bit, maybe, I called Patty and I talked to her, and I said, you know, we're, we really would like to get the one, the one in Glendon done, because we've got our street project not too far behind it, so, and she said she'd be willing to fund that one. So I think when they get to the body, you know, I think they get, what, thirty to forty million dollars every other year for bridge bonding? So I think when they get to the last million dollars or so, they keep that money pretty tight. And you can see, we're really not looking for an awful lot of money there, you know, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. Uh, anyway, she was willing to advance our project, so I thought that was real nice. Uh, as a result, then, Eric, combine that with three other township bridge replacements, and we're gonna be, next week, we'll bring a request for, uh, setting a bid letting date and advertising next week, so. Uh, that helped us advance that project and get it to advertising and hopefully opening bids and getting them constructed this year. Twenty seventeen, uh, pretty busy year, we're gonna do some paving on County Road Six. Uh, we've also got the, this, uh, school project on Twelfth Avenue with the city of Moorhead, kind of a combined project there. We've got a streetlight that the MinDOT's gonna be doing on Trunk Highway Ten in Glendon, so we've got half of our share on that. Uh, other than that, we just got bridge replacements. That's a good year that we don't, uh, we're kinda coming out of the hole with regard to our state aid dollars. I know, uh, the auditor's office will really like that, we're not going further as far as advancing from the future US funds. Twenty eighteen, we've got a bridge on County Road Ten, that's out towards the rolog area. We've got another, uh, federal aid bridge on County Road Fourteen, just south of Glendon there, right by the Buffalo River. Uh, we've got our paving project on County Road Ninety-five, and we've got our big recon project on One Seventeen, that's a joint project with the city of Glendon. Uh, that's just gonna be a fantastic project, I'm really looking forward to that. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a real narrow road right now, and all the kids walk to school right on the roadway. Buses and farm equipment are coming down a narrow road with no shoulders, no sidewalk. Uh, there's open ditches and culverts in all the driveways, so it's gonna just be a fantastic project. It's gonna be urban section when you get, when you get down, urban gutter and storm sewer. Uh, we have a heartland trail, ten-foot path on one side, and we got a, I think it's like a five-foot path on the other side, so keep all kids off the streets, and it's just gonna look really good, looking forward to it.
Mr. Chairman, while we're, while we're on two thousand and sixteen, I, I wanna bring up, and we just talked about the bonding bill and this current legislation, there's, um, as, as we know in Moorhead here, there's been a lot of work going on to try to get the funding in the bonding bill, and it was in the governor's bill for the, um, grade separation for that major project, Moorhead, for the, um, um, underpass. And that has stalled right now, and I know that, uh, Delray, Mayor Williams, as, uh, on her Facebook, she has a deal on there where, there was a link where people could go to sign a petition, uh, to show support for Moorhead and for that project. Um, that's the first thing I did at six o'clock this morning, was to get on and sign that petition. And I, through this Facebook, I shared Delray Williams', um, post on that, but I would encourage any, any of the citizens in Moorhead, or even the people who travel into Moorhead, understand the need of, of needing to have underpasses here, uh, both for economic development, for safety, should, um, should help support that cause, and, um, I would even, I would even like our board, um, if we, if we could to just, uh, formally send something to, um, I can't remember that state legislature's name, but who, who sponsored the bill, but if we could send something to them today, um, showing support from Clay County for, for this project, I would certainly, uh, like the board to consider doing that.
I think we did that at our M R C C meeting yesterday, we granted an idea.
There's, well, there's, yeah, there's a action alert letter from AMC on these transportation issues, but we can do this too, so I'll make a motion that the board send, that the county send a letter supporting the city's request for.
Yeah, and I would, I would second that motion, I, and then, Brian, then we can try to get that out.
We'll get that out today, and get your city chairman.
Okay, very good. Okay, we got a motion, we send a letter of support, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, well, I will move on.
Sorry, but I, it's, it's an important one, that's, that's a major, major project, so.
Okay, so I kinda went through twenty eighteen, is there any, any questions, any comments on eighteen, uh, twenty nineteen? We've got, uh, more bridge replacements, and then we've got a little mill and overlay on County Road Ten. Uh, that's a, that's the section there that gets all the gravel trucks from the city of Downer out to High Ninety-four. Uh, it's rough, the residents in that area have had a lot of concerns, and they're very upset with, you know, the mona traffic, the pounding through town, so hopefully that'll help ease that a little bit. Um, and we did talk at the highway committee quite a bit about County Road One. Uh, we're doing the flood mitigation project and jointly with the watershed this summer, and what this will do then, we'll go, complete that project out to Twenty-six. Uh, I have heard from quite a few residents at the annual township officers meeting, one of the guys up in Cragness mentioned, well, why don't you just keep going with that project? Well, we'd love to, but we have to wait until we get funding for it, so. Uh, Eric and I looked quite in great detail whether we can do an overlay on that, or if we have to grade it, and I, I just don't think there's enough existing room there to overlay it, according to the state standards, so.
So an overlay isn't?
Correct.
It's a rebuild then?
Exactly, yep, so. So what we did is we, we put the re, the regrading in twenty nineteen, and then the paving of it in two thousand and twenty. Recently added, um, there, there's quite a bit of flexibility in our plan, as there always is, so, being that this is in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, if something changes, um, one thing that Eric did, uh, is pretty additive that we'd like to do is do a traffic study once the project is built up this summer. So we will get some traffic, yeah, we'll get some, not really a study, but we'll take a traffic count up there and see, maybe the traffic is low enough where we can still get an overlay. I think seven fifty cars per day is the limit, am I right?
Sounds right, yep.
Yeah, so if it's.
Well, you're gonna have to wait till it's back open.
Yeah, exactly, gotta get it open and get the traffic flowing through there, so probably next summer, we'll check it and see. Uh, and there's, there's still a small chance we can do an overlay on that, and then spend that money on some of our other roads throughout the county, and, uh, but we'll have to just kinda take a look at it next year. Uh, two thousand and twenty is the first year we don't have the bonding repayment, so, uh, we were excited, we were able to do a lot of work there. Uh, one, one thing we did, pretty much do is, uh, we're. One thing we did, pretty much do is, when John Everett was on the board, he was very adamant, we tried to finish County Road two, and this would be the year we can finish that one up, so.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, you mentioned that too. So that'll be nice, we'll get County Road two fully re- overlaid and freshen that up a little bit. County Road fourteen, we got some federal aid money there for the paving of the shoulders, it's got gravel shoulders now. That's where the American Crystal Piling Station is on fourteen, and we'll have a new bridge two years prior, so it'll be nice to overlay that one. County Road nineteen, that's just a bridge replacement. County Road thirty-three, that's another one where I think Frank's heard from some of his residents up in the North Holly area, they, they'd like to see something done up there. The cracks are widening, it does have the drop shoulders up there, and we really haven't done anything on thirty-three for probably twenty-five, thirty years.
Heard it again last night.
So, did you let them know it's on our plan, or?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. So we're looking at an overlay there. And then County Road one hundred, we have three bridges up there, and then the paving on County Road one, so. The plan isn't quite as packed full as it has been in the past, but I get a little scary when we're, when we have it so almost overfull. But I, you know, I think in the past we've taken the idea that things can move around a little bit, but we put as much on there as we think we can, and we'll work with the funds that are available, so. There's a lot of flexibility in here for the future. We tried to address our needs, and I think it's a pretty good plan.
Question for you, David, if, if we have, we could, we can only get so much in state aid funding per year, right?
Yep, we get about three million a year.
Yeah, but, so like in, if we look at twenty twenty, for Highway two, you know, we have significant state dollars, one point six million?
Yep.
That would go to that project? If, if we, if we advance it, can, can we get a delayed payment from?
Like from a contractor, you mean?
No. If, if we did a project and funded it, would, could we, could we ask for reimbursement?
I believe so, yeah, that's like advanced construction, correct, we could fund it ourselves and then request the funds later, that's.
And that's, and, and?
Yep, I believe so, I don't know if there's a time limit on that.
But that, would that, would that, would that then, those funds would come out in the year that it's advanced?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just.
Yeah, we, we could request those funds probably on any one of these years, 'cause they're, like I said, we're not completely packed full on how much we could advance. I think on any one of these years, we could probably do something along those lines. So.
Why don't, it's all, all this is questions in regards to the earlier conversation.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is I will, I'll find out where, you know, I'll get some really good information on the bids from neighboring counties, and then I'll ask state aid, you know, if we decide to advance in sixteen or seventeen, how far out could we wait before we request the funds, see what they say?
Yeah, like if, if, if we built two in a year where we couldn't, that we're, we're already overloaded with our state money, could we submit that project even though it's done? Could we submit it in eighteen, for example, nineteen, and get paid for it?
Correct, I believe we could, we would just delay our funding request, we would build it according to state standards, we would have the state involved in all the process of construction.
Check on that, make certain of it.
Okay.
I mean, we could see, if we're seeing that significance, bituminous is way down, we've, I mean, oils, oils at what, forty-some dollars a barrel now, and it's, that's been known to be at ninety-something.
Eric and I talked about it quite a bit, that it would be really nice, based on what other counties and other states are doing with, with the unique low prices on asphalt paving, it'd be real nice.
We need to. We're having the discussion.
We need to look at it closely. Thank you. Are you, were you done with?
Yep.
Okay, I, I have moved approval of the recommended fiber plan by the committee.
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Got that one.
Thanks, David.
Just want to make one comment, you know, yesterday morning I got a call on the road, and I talked to Brian Frederick and.
Talking to Brian.
I just want to thank you for the quick action, I met with the farmer, went out there last night, and I met with him, and he's just happy with the result, how quickly we responded to him, and.
Sure.
Thank you for your department for doing that.
Sounds good, I'll pass it on.
It was a quick response on that, and I think he's satisfied.
Yeah, this is a tough time of year, the blades haven't really gotten out all that much, and we haven't had a lot of rain, where in previous years where we'd get a bunch of rain on top of it, then it would really get cold, so. It's been awful dry, we actually need a little bit of rain, so we're hoping for a little bit this week.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we go into the construction of the law enforcement center, Senator Lee's agreement with the city of Moorhead. Mr. Berg will be handling that part. Is Matt gonna help us with that, or is?
I think the sheriff is.
Okay.
Sneaky, sneaky.
He took off when they found out we're gonna do this, huh? Conveniently got a call.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, other commissioners. Couple of things I handed out to you, and I thought I'd touch base on those first, and they're kind of high off the press. The first one, if you look at this page, Tim Magnuson updated that last Friday, if you notice up there. We had another closing last Friday, we had another purchase agreement signed last Thursday or Friday. And so if you see the totals up there now on the twenty-five properties that cover the two blocks to the north. I'm not sure. We have closed on sixteen of those properties. We have purchase agreements on five of them. We have, we're working on purchase agreements with two others, and two have said that they are not interested in selling. So, the, the activity has slowed down quite a bit in regards to the purchase of it. Once we get the two purchase agreements, we, we will pretty much have everything that we expect locked up. But the properties, the activities in the properties, of course, and you've heard me mention this a few times, the focus has changed to the inspections of the homes for asbestos, and then we are working. Joe will be coming in with a proposal, probably next week, on the abatement of that asbestos to those homes. Because what we want is, we wanna approach probably demolition this summer on it, rather than later fall. The sooner we get some of that, those things done, the better, and that would be on the west block we will plan to start with, so.
I just, I just want to clarify, I'm getting questions, when I talk about this, I get questions right away, and I know I discussed it with you before, on are we gonna sell these houses, or are we just gonna demolish them, you know, so. That question's coming up, and we discussed that yesterday, that the plan is to demolish them.
Yeah.
Unless we're gonna contact some house movers and.
Yeah, I think we may make some calls on that, but what our discussion has been is that these homes range from probably sixty years home, up as high as a hundred years old. And there's smaller homes, many of them, and they have been, had, some have had additions put on them and things, so. We don't know what the market would be, and we don't think it would be that good to move those homes, and it may be more costly than it is to, to just demolish them, but.
For instance, I can speak on experience, my husband and I moved a flood house from Moorhead, and you're gonna spend about forty thousand dollars to move these homes, and, and if you look at the value, you know, just thinking what it's gonna cost to buy it, and then move it, you know, you're gonna be upside down before you even have it on a foundation.
You're not gonna find buyers.
Yeah. I just wanted to get that out, you know, 'cause that question's coming up, you know, what are we gonna do with the homes and stuff?
And we were gonna look at some training opportunities with some of those homes, normally for both their SWAT teams and their fire departments.
Some's already been done, yeah.
Some's already been done.
Very good, okay, thank you.
But with that, though, there are some detached garage that aren't that old, there's not too many of them, but, and we may get maybe a thousand bucks for them or something if we auction them, we'll have to, you know, publicly auction those. And anything that we get for them, and if it's the cost of the, of the buyer to move them, it's better than putting the material in the, in the landfill or, or.
The garage, garage is gold.
Yep, yep.
They're worth, they're worth it to try to put them.
What's our plan with that, do we have, our county property auction isn't till December, correct?
Well, you can, you can, you can set them anytime you want.
Right, but that may be something that we wanna expedite, you know, if, if there is some interest. Somebody wants to do it, then, then let's get it together, and.
Yeah, and, and we are working on that too, and, and talking about, well, the procedure, and the timing of it, and and approval on, on those kinds of things as well, so.
Wayne, do you have a question?
Okay, any questions on this? So it's, when you look at that, and I know we've talked about that before, but I'll just reiterate, it was June twentieth of last year, so less than a year ago that we did send out a letter to those property owners, and have closed on sixteen, and those people are out of there. That is, that's a real good percentage, so we'll see how things move along with that.
Good job of that.
And then the next thing I passed out, if you'll notice the date on there, is May ninth, that's yesterday, that just came out from the architect yesterday, and if you remember right from our discussions, the, the correctional facility is in its final stages of design, let's say, they're down to the detail of the design of it. Whereas the discussion about the law enforcement center is in its schematic stage, and the architects just sent this out based on changes from the last meeting, it takes them a while to adjust and, and different things, so. That's kind of the most latest, up-to-date schematic design of where the law enforcement center and the parking would be, and different things along those lines, so. I guess I thought I'd get that out today too, when we go into this discussion on, on the joint, the construction of the law enforcement center joint facility with the city of Moorhead. So, any questions on that, before we launch into some of the elements of it? I realize you haven't had a time to, to look at that. And then frankly, last night, the city engineers, Bob Zimmerman and, and Tom Tobbridge, had looked at some of the design on Eleventh Street, and had made some suggestions that, that will be talked about probably at the next, next Monday at the committee meeting, about the entrances off Eleventh Street, and could there be some corrections when we're doing this project and different things, so. And Eric had, from Highway, had, and Dave had sent it over to me, and we got on the phone last night to talk about it, and he forwarded it to the architects, and, and so they're commenting back and forth on this, so. It's a good time to look at those things if, if they're going to be adjusted or not, so.
Yeah, just looking at this, on the, the, the drive entrance off of Eleventh Street into the, what would be the new L E C parking lot, that, that is right there at the, at a main intersection of crosswalks and everything with the schools, I don't know if that's a good thing to do that right there. As opposed to if it came in even off the north, right there to. I don't know, I don't know, it's, it's something, I'm not qualified to answer that, I, I'm only qualified to question it.
From a response perspective, Sheriff, what, what would be the most tangible entrance exit?
Well, it's gonna be Eleventh Street, whether it's on the north or south, it isn't gonna be much difference, because if they're going out the north, they're gonna get on Eleventh Street, and if they're going code three, they're going code three.
Yeah.
So whether it's there or the, I don't think there's any difference.
But Sheriff, I, I guess I wasn't referring to the squad cars, I was referring to the public who's gonna be using that parking lot, too. Or is that, you know, is that parking lot gonna be strictly for squad cars, or?
No, I think that's where the public is.
Right. That would be my issue was, or of concern would be there's no stop sign right there.
There probably would be.
Well, there, yeah, there's gonna have to be.
Yeah, but I mean, I, but those are the issues, so.
And the same thing, the, the discussion last night with the engineers, Mr. Sheriff, I may, the, they were looking at the adjustment here on Eighth Avenue to Ninth Avenue, that there's a jog there, and it's right at an intersection that comes off from the school, and again, the engineers, as, as Mr. Campbell said, hopefully have the expertise to study traffic flows and
Right.
and pedestrian control, and see if we could make an improvement there. And there was some good discussion emails back and forth between the architects and the engineers last night on, on the flow and the activity on it. And you know, even when you jump over to even the Ninth Street, I've noticed they've taken the entrance to the parking lot. That's the current law enforcement center parking lot, which comes off, I think there's two entrances coming off of Ninth Street, and they have eliminated those and made it a Ninth Avenue entrance, which makes some sense. So, there's, they're looking at kind of every aspect of it, which is really good.
I think this is a good start for.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross and I had talked a little bit about parking needs, and, and would it be possible to, to explore discussion, parking on the east side of the courthouse?
Yeah.
In the green space?
In fact, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Moosville, the, the suggestion from the city last night was that, that Ninth Avenue be straightened out, and the entrance go straight into the courthouse, and then break off from there. The architects had a little problem with that because of traffic flow and different things, but the, the interesting thing about it, I know you guys had talked about that, or brought it up the other day, and the engineers are, have also been looking at that, of straightening that out, and that would then turn into possibly some additional parking on the front of the courthouse. And if you, if you notice too, and I was doing some counting last night on the parking spaces, that we are taking away about a hundred spaces to the south of the law enforcement center right now for the new jail, but if you know, if you go to, straight to the north, it's replaced with a ninety-six space parking lot, then a thirty-six space parking lot, and then you jump over to the new law enforcement center, there's ninety-one spaces in there, and then there's also nineteen spaces, so there's a, there's a increase of, up in that northern part, of probably well over a hundred parking spaces, which will be good. But I, I like the dialogue, we're looking at the intersection down here, and maybe creating more spaces down in this southeast.
Well, we're just looking at the fact that a lot of these spaces we're looking at is probably gonna be employee parking, and we're looking at employee parking, you know? And I'm just looking at some days we come here on a Tuesday, or whenever court days are, you know, that parking lot is full, and we got a lot of green space right here, just to the
Yeah.
e, east of us that, right now all we do is mow it, I don't see anybody, you know, picking out there or anything like that, you know, so. I mean, could we utilize?
It's a good time to look at it.
Well, especially if we're talking about having parking lot-specific areas for buildings where people are working. You know, I, I don't know if, if we do have an east side entrance to the courthouse, someone serving in a jury trial, I don't know if they really wanna be a block north and west of the courthouse, so. If we can expand the front of that lot to be more of a public-specific lot, may be in our interest.
Certainly something to look at, that's for sure. Yeah, I, I thought that was real interesting, that the engineers were looking at changing that intersection and how the entrance would be to then, and they, they were suggesting that an entrance be kind of then to the center of the courthouse, and then probably that, that Eighth Avenue would be closed off, and a center entrance to the family service center, come around it off the center, so if, they would be ending up about a block apart, the entrances, I mean, makes sense. It's, it's good for, for dialogue and consideration, so.
I certainly like the, the way the, the new proposed L E C building, it's really close to being in line with the courthouse in terms of setback from Eleventh Street, they're fairly close now, which is, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, it, it is, it's, it's, it's looking fairly well, I, I think fairly good, I should say. So to go into our memo, and you have it in front of you, but the, the audience does not. The correctional facility, law enforcement center, and a correctional facility slash jail, it's, like I said, we had an old jail, now we're going to have a correctional facility, and hopefully be training people to be better citizens as they come out of their time that they have served. they have served. The, the committee has met several times regarding how the county will finance the upcoming project, the law enforcement center is proposed to be a joint facility shared between the Clay County Sheriff's Department and the Morehead Police Department. The proposal and recommendation from the finance committee is for the county to build and own the law enforcement center and to negotiate a long-term lease with the city of Morehead. Elements of the lease consist of, and, and maybe I'll just talk a little bit about the lease, in, I think it was the finance committee, I know Commissioner Campbell chairs that, and he directed us some time ago to start working pretty aggressively on a, on a lease, and Jenny Ashmaraja, the Assistant County Attorney, and I sat down for about two and a half hours one day, working through the wordage on the lease, we, we started with a current lease that we use for, over at the family service center, and we were doing some adjusting to it, and we looked at different rates of pay and different things, and then we did start with a, with a template of it, and now that has been to at least two finance, jail finance meetings, and she has not, I talked with her just a little bit this morning, we'd hoped that she would, could be here, but she's in court right now, that she has not made the latest update and fine tuning that the finance, the jail, or the finance committee has looked at in regards to the lease. I do not have a lease in front of you, but I, I tried to extract the elements of it, and Jenny agrees with those elements that we are going to look at now. So what we, the lease is containing as a 20-year lease to mirror the 20-year bond schedule for financing the property, the lease will be based on a square footage usage, we use the example of 20,000, 25,000 square feet to try to establish some range, a square foot rental rate on the property, and of course if they, if the square footage is greater or lesser than the total amount that they would pay would, would vary as well. Morehead, it was discovered that Morehead has invested about $670,000 into the primary investment in the building. Now, what the rate, the relationship we have with the city is that they pay a maintenance fee, we split the janitorial services and, and then for, and the, the lights and power and all that kind of thing, the heating, but what happens if a roof needs to be replaced or the parking lot needs to be replaced, they pay then their share out of others' monies, is, is the arrangement that we have now. But, so we felt that because of the financial aspect of it and the ability of Morehead to pay at, at the current time, and this has entered into it, so I gotta, gotta bring it out, their ability to pay is less in these first four or five years, so we have applied that $670,000 towards their payment of rental space within the first five years of the lease. And then in beginning, the sixth year of the lease, the city will pay a reasonable competitive rental space rate, and that's what Georgia does over at the family service center now, she goes out and surveys what a competitive rate is within the area, and I think you're seeing right now your renewals are coming in at 13 to $14 a square foot for the space in the family service center, and with the credit that they get and what they feel they can pay, it would be probably to start out with about a 10 to $11 range, and then it quickly moves when they can pay more to that $14 to $15 per square foot for rental space, what we feel is a competitive rate when we, we get that. Now remembering...
So, Brian, those, those folks that rent from us and pay the $14 or whatever it is per square foot, do they, do they also pay an operations and maintenance fee?
No, they do not.
So.
Covers.
So that, that is gonna be another difference here, that they're gonna be paying a rental fee based on a square footage plus the, the ONM.
No, Mr. Chair, if I may, no.
Is the ONM the full 450 then, or, or the, that include, the 450 is the rate?
Everything's included in the rate.
At that, okay, so that, and that's what comes, that, what's, what we showing is the 450?
That is correct, yes, and, and, yeah, and later in the payment, when they're paying the $450,000 a year, then we break off, and that was for financing purposes, and we could apply about $200,000 towards that principal and interest, but the 250 would be for the operation of it and upkeep.
So that's, so of the $14 per square foot, five years from now or whatever, then that, then that 250,000 of that money would go to the ONM?
Well, that's what we feel.
Out of the 14, okay, I just, I, I didn't know if the, if the ONM, the way Lori had done it was over and above that or not?
No, no, that $200,000 that she's showing on the amortization schedule for payment of the bond then is extracted from the $450,000.
I knew the 450 was, but I didn't know if that.
Okay, yeah, no, we're not showing any of that payment to go towards the bond in the, in the other stages because we're giving that credit for that, those first four year, five years, I should say.
You answered my question.
Okay, so the lease price will include upkeep and maintenance of the city space in the building, not specialized needs, and we were very careful to have some dialogue around that issue in the, in the lease that we're putting together, because if there's some special needs of what the city department may have, and it might be a few hundred thousand dollars of a piece of equipment, they would have to supply that then to the, to the building.
What's an example of something like that?
Well.
Like covered parking, is that?
Well, that, that's going to be a, I'll say that's going to be part of the lease payment.
Right, but that seems like a specialized need.
It, it is, it, it could be considered a specialized need, but let me say that I know there's gonna be a lot of the equipment that will be shared, but let's say the police department had a special program where they were going to, oh, fingerprint, let's just use fingerprint children, and they got a grant for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for specialized fingerprint equipment needed to be mounted on the wall in there, that would have to be extra, that wouldn't be part of this type of thing, and their office furniture and different things will be their own special needs that, that they.
Just have one more question. As we looked, you know, I did meet with Brian, so I, I do feel comfortable with what the dialogue has been in creating this, my question is, in looking at what that 20-year projection would be, Georgia was able to go out and survey what comparable lease per square footage would be, how, how can we forecast what that will be in 20 years, and it, and I understand that, that maybe you can't, but I'm just concerned that, that I'm not seeing a whole lot of inflation in what this would be, and so I just want to make sure that we're getting the fair amount for what, what the space will be.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, I think that's a very, very fair question, because we have talked about that ourselves when we were starting to put through it, but you know, just, just like what we just saw with oil prices, that, that makes such a difference in the, the cost to the building over here, when we see low oil prices, usually the natural gas prices go along with it, and it's cheaper to heat it, you know, and things, so we started out with an amortization schedule of 40 years that the city presented to us, and we feel we need to bring that down to correspond to the 20-year bond, so the fact that the, the new board, well, maybe there'll be some in 20 years that are still here, but.
I may wonder.
They will, they will then negotiate a, a, a new rate, but the other thing that you bring up, an interesting point, and I know I've seen leases to do that, they will put in an inflation rate of one or two or 3%, I know one we did over in, in Becker County for the minimum security, it was a 10-year lease and the rate was fixed, but then in the renewal of the, there was two options of two, five years, and then it was an inflation rate of 3% for the new rate, so, you know, but we're still in the discussion stage, that's basically why we're here today, that's a very good suggestion.
And I, and I know Commissioner Campbell has a comment, but part of my concern would be as we are renewing these, these leases for other, other agencies that are using our space, I would be cautious and concerned if in 20 years, this reflected payment would be much, much different than what, what those other ones would be.
And I, I, I like, I, I do like the, the fact that maybe when, when we do discuss this, of course, we're discussing something that also has to be approved by the Morehead City Council, and, and I, I think it would, I mean, the Morehead City Council's gonna understand exactly what you're talking about too, and, and so to bring up maybe in some sort of an inflationary option, I think is something that, that's worthy of discussion to, to maybe come up with something. On the other hand, I think if you talk to a lot of people who are in the business of leasing, the longer lease agreement they can get, the more inclined they're gonna be to have a lower rate, just because they have security in a tenant, so, so there becomes issues there, for example, even, even if you talk to the people who even will go out on the market to simply rent an apartment, you, you might, you're gonna get a, you can get a nine-month lease rate, but it's gonna cost you more per month than a 12-month lease rate's gonna cost you. So, so there's some, there's, there's some things there that the county in, and in regards to, well, let's take one of our tenants over here, 15 years from now, and say, well, why am I after paying this and Morehead's paying a lesser rate? Well, I think then you simply say that they, they committed to a long-term lease long ago that helped us make the whole project sustainable financially.
Yeah, I think that typically if you have a renegotiate, then they also have the option to mail out of it.
To bail out.
We don't really, we don't want that situation.
Right.
We set that up when we did the Red River Dispatch Center too, we had a long-term arrangement, so it was advantageous to them and also to us as a government agency to have that in place, so.
I mean, it's certainly something that, that we can go into them as, as, as a dialogue that, that we can.
You guys are just on the finance committee, so I'm just, I'm just voicing my concern.
I think it's a good point, yes.
I appreciate that you look for that.
It's a, it's a, it's a valid option to negotiate, but ultimately we, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna get something that's gonna work, work for both entities and be fair, that's, that's the key.
And if I may continue, I got a couple more points, the actual square footage for payment will be determined as the building is designed and the space is assigned, so we, I think it's too early to say this is the exact amount until the space is designed and the percentages and the break off, and, and we've even looked at a different rate maybe for the garage because of that being different space.
See, one other, one other item of, of discussion, you know, we've talked about the rental on the space that's gonna be entirely for the purpose of, of Morehead City, what about the common areas? What, are, are we gonna be asking anything in there for the common areas? For example, I, I thought 40% of the whole building, like we were told by architects was, was basically gonna be common areas, areas shared by both, by both entities. Are we going to put something into the lease that says they're paying for a portion of the common area?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, that, that's a very good point to bring out. The common area currently, we are looking at a 50/50 split, if I'm not mistaken.
That's on the operations and maintenance? Is that on the cost too?
That'd be on the cost, in other words, about, like you said, 40% of the building is expected to be common areas, and frankly, I, I think that's such a valid point to bring out, because some people may question the, the validity of building, one building for both units, when in fact they could build separate buildings.
That's a bigger savings.
But here is a huge savings of the fact that the training rooms and the meeting rooms and the interview rooms and everything like that, there's gonna be common space that both departments are sharing, so yes, that, and, and the split was looking at about maybe 56 to 44%, that's gonna vary just a little bit, so for simplicity, right now, the common areas was gonna be split 50/50.
Okay, and that, and that's, that's, that, that makes it a nice and clean.
Yep.
But, so then, so then what would we be, what would we be telling them then? Would we be saying that in the rental agreement, that the area that's fully there is they're paying this much per square foot, and on the common areas, they're gonna be paying half of that?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, I guess you could do it either way, one of the things, if there was, let's say, 20,000 square feet of common area, they would be charged for 10,000 of that, and they would be charged at the rate.
Okay, 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 but I just didn't know, but somehow we're gonna have that incorporated into our proposal this week?
Yes, well, yeah, and that is just a, that's the thought process we were going down, you know, again, it's two governing bodies, yourselves and the city will have to agree on this, so I'm sure there will have to be a little bit of give and take along the way as we, as we get to a, a final design here of the, of the lease. In addition to the lease payment, and we talked about this the other morning when we met with Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell, in addition to these lease payments, we'll negotiate other such fees as, there's a, there's a pretty big building permit fee to, in, in these buildings, and if we're gonna demolish the old law enforcement center, that maybe we can, we can negotiate some of the trade-offs on, some of those fees to, to the city, so we'll be, we'll be talking about that, and the law enforcement center will be part of the county finance package, however, bonding may be in increments depending on expenditures, and what I meant by that is, we're looking at it as one project, but right now you've already bonded for $10 million for the jail to, but you're also buying property that is going to be used for the law enforcement center. Now, the next bond that we take out, we expect to in the spring of 2017, and most of those dollars are going to be going towards the, the jail, but then we'll probably have a third bond for the law enforcement center, so that's what I mean, this is one project that we're looking at now, but we may look at maybe about three different increments of bonding, because we don't want to bond too much ahead of time.
Well, the, the only issue there is I think that, you know, 'cause what we're looking at, April timeframe of next year for, for the next bond, and I, you know, I think, you know, if we're far enough along and we know that the LEC is gonna be a reality, and, you know, our goal would be that they'd be completed at the same time, I think we need to look at what, I think we need to base that decision of whether there's a third bond based on what the going rates are, because if the going rates are going good, you have, we have, I think, at least three years.
Yes, we do.
To finish a project anyway, so it'd be in our best interests, if the rates are good, just to do one more bond and be done with it.
Right, and the only little caveat there is that with building a correctional facility falls under a, a different classification for a bond, a jail bond, whereas now a separated building, even though it's a law enforcement center, we would probably do under a capital improvement bond, so that may enter into it, you'd probably do it at the same time, and, and it'd be just a couple different issues, but.
It's the time, it's not about how.
Absolutely, and just to, to refresh you on that, the $10 million bond that you sold just a month or two ago, the net interest rate was 1.97, which is really, really good. Lori has been able to negotiate an interest rate of .7 at a local bank for the funds to be just a deposit, not necessarily a certificate of deposit, but just on deposit at .7%, and that is a real good rate too, the next closest one was a .26 interest rate, so that makes quite a bit of difference in $10 million, so that is really going well for us, I think as well, so, and then maybe just one point that, and this is way off of, and I probably shouldn't even bring it up, but the sheriff brought it up to me yesterday, we are using our state wind energy dollars dedicated to the jail project, and we talked about $150,000 a year on that, Lori just told me that those funds have come in from the state, and they were 180-some thousand dollars, but 20% does go to the local township of that, and then it'll be about $152,000 that stays in ours. Now, one of the questions was, well, that, that the sheriff brought up to me yesterday, and I tell you so that if it makes sense for you and the, the people that are watching, you know, they said, well, that's wind energy and it's coming from that southeast corner, and we have to put up with the windmills and different things, so that money should come back to our township, is that kind of the question that was put to you approximately?
They had some concerns about using that for the project, because they need money for their roads or.
But, but my response to that would be that if a manufacturing company builds a $5 million building out here, we don't. $5 million building out here, we don't take that $5 million asset and leave those tax dollars just within that township.
Right.
That is, that's, those are county funds that are collected, and then through highway five-year projects and fiber planning, that is distributed. So, to start isolating one tax source, I, I don't know that that is the road you would want to go down.
That decision, I believe, was made eight years ago, or seven years ago.
Well, we, well, a few years ago.
That was dedicated to the.
Yeah, maybe three years ago.
Whatever.
20% is a significant budget bump that they are receiving.
Yes, it is.
They're clearly receiving.
That's right, yeah.
You know, and, you know, hopefully that wind energy will go on and on and on and on and on for many, many years. Once this project is, is done, then, you know, would certainly, my hope that the future board would, would look at putting that to our roads.
To our highways.
Well, that has the potential to grow too.
And that has, yeah, potential to grow.
Considerably, I mean, it has a lot of potential there.
Especially if certain politicians stay in office.
Grant.
Wendy, you know, what I'm saying. Okay. With that, I guess, from an operational standpoint, I asked the sheriff if he could join me this morning, and, but he's been kind of quiet. Maybe he doesn't talk too much.
No.
Okay.
I'm used to you by now. I have one more, I have one more.
Well, Mr. Chair, anything else?
No, good for you. We're going to be meeting with the city council next.
Monday.
Monday night, so.
So, um.
We should probably have the board support us bringing this forward. So, I would make the motion that.
Okay, hang on. Okay, I, what were you going to do?
I was just going to make a motion that, as a board, we support bringing this forward to the Moritz City Council for consideration to partner with us in the law enforcement center.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Do you have some more to add there?
No, he was telling me about Monday night. He can't make Monday night meeting. Yeah, and I, I think the only point to, to make on that is that we, we probably need this lease in place before we get real serious about expanding a lot of architectural dollars and other dollars because we will, we will want to.
That's why I think we should be asking the Moritz City Council to take some action on it fairly quickly so we can move forward with the project. Because, you know, if they're not interested or they're not willing to take any action, then I don't see if we can take any action on this either. So, we need their commitment, just like we're committing to this, so.
So, what time is that meeting, Lori?
5:30 Monday night.
And it is, it is an open meeting.
Yeah.
So, you, you guys are welcome to come, but I think it's, well, we got a motion on that.
It's a committee of the whole meeting, right?
It is.
But it's still.
So, they won't take action that night?
No, but we can, I, I think our point is we want to, want them to know we need it done sooner rather than later.
Yep, yep.
Here we have a motion on the floor for supporting this lease agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, can we meet that day at four here before?
Oh, sure.
Then we can just make sure.
Is there a, is there a 5:30 end here, or is it?
If there is, I had known nothing of it.
I just was looking at my schedule.
There's one Thursday.
Thursday what?
Yeah, you better.
As you do.
Today, no, no, today.
They didn't really want to talk about that day. They wanted to get something else in the last two minutes.
Anyway, you all started off with reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, May 3rd, Moritz Planning Commission, the general business, then we unanimously forwarded to the city council a request by R.S. Carey to rezone a section of property west of Sixth Street and north of 50th Avenue South from transitional to low density. That was the only item on the agenda. Thursday, May 5th, local advisory council for children's mental health, general business, and then there was a lot of discussion about what was presented to this board last week. It was very productive and interesting. We had agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Clay County Collaborative, Lakeland Mental Health, Head Start, Clay County Juvenile Center Solutions, Rethink Mental Health Summit Guidance, and from the Mobile Crisis Unit. And that is the extent of my report.
Sure. Last week, after our board meeting, we had our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and we did have several items on there. A lot of them had to do with the landfill shop relocation. There's still some site work issues going on there, and there's, there was some question about whether or not we would have to have a fire suppression system in there. And then the methane gas issue, which we, we did approve today. And then the letting date is going to be on the 17th of May on the site work, I believe, and some of that stuff. And of course, the five-year construction plan, which we went through today. And then we discussed about the 12th Avenue South, the Moritz School project issue. And as you know, the city wanted us to basically pave that, that half-mile county share of that project. And, and then in turn, what we talked about doing would be turning that back to them, just taking it off of our system and then the city would put it on their system. That's typically how it does when we do turn something over, is we improve it and then turn it over. And so, then in addition to that, there was, there was a draft agreement that talked about the whole underpass issue on 11th Street. If that were to come through, there was some talk that that might be included with the separation on the 20th Street one. And if it is, that there would have to be some local cost share on that, and that's where, where, right now, the negotiated dollar amount for the county is $500,000. And I think you, if you saw in the footnotes in, in the five-year plan, it, it put it in there as a possibility in the event that the bonding money would come through. It would be something that would, we should be excited to write a check for if that were the case. But then it's just a matter of, at the time and where we would have to pull those funds from. But I think the, our Highway Committee has certainly agreed that $500,000 would be a really good investment on the part of the county. And then the, we talked about turnbacks in County Road 82 by the high school, and some, Moritz needs to do some route redesign for our county road systems, I guess. So, that was Highway Tracking. And then I had, then we, on Thursday, we had the Clay County Joint Powers Board. I'll let Jenny report on that. She shares that one. And then we also, that same day, we had the Greater Fargo Moritz Annual Meeting at the Hinton Garden Inn. And that one, there was a lot of good conversations. There were keynote speakers, were different workforce groups. And then there was a Business Development Report by Don Morton from Microsoft. And there was a report from a young man, an entrepreneurial report on what he does with mechanical arms for, and mechanical legs for, for those who need them. And it was a, a dream that this young kid had, and he's really brought it to, and he, right now, he's operating.
It's pretty amazing. It's that 3D.
3D, yeah.
You know, so the cost from, of a, like an arm was, was $100,000, and it's down to little, nothing compared to that, based on what he's done.
And right now, he's, you know, they're operating out of Barnesville, is where they're currently located. But it's just another one of those deals where this young guy, I think we're going to, 10 years from now, we're going to probably be hearing big things from, from somebody else from this area, maybe even as big as the Doug Burgum.
The next Bill Gates, yeah.
But anyway, so that was a very, very, very encouraging report. And that is all I had. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I, my committee was the Joint Powers, where we had a solid waste project update from Kirk Rosenberg from the county and Steve Moore from City of Moritz Public Works. They're doing great things, continual projects, that they really collaborated, collaborated well together. I appreciate that. And we did discuss our fire EMS appreciation day. We're encouraging all county citizens to wear red on Friday, May 20th.
And also EDC, and here's a copy of their annual report. I'll leave it here if anybody is interested in looking it over. They do, do a lot of, a lot of great things going on there. We had the Recorders Compliance, Diane went over all of that. And we had the Minnesota counties caucus, a couple meetings. And yesterday, Frank and I attended that and had a legislative update on what's going on with the legislature on the projects MRCC is interested in. And main discussion on the transportation issues. And AMC was there, and they did, you should have on your email, an action request, and if you could, maybe you've already done it. But they were trying to get as many commissioners to, to review that letter, sign it, and submit it. So, they.
Before noon today.
Before noon today, so, yeah. So, if you do that, that would be great. And that was it for me.
My report as far as Highway Tracking, Kevin covered that. I know on the Springfield System, I think it's just a matter of whether we're a commercial building or not, you know, so we have to determine that. There again, MRCC, Grant just reported on, they're talking about gas tax, you know, raising that 12 cents. I think that's part of the proposal now.
It is. They, yeah, it's, you get mixed messages. They sound, you know, positive about something happening with transportation, but there's still a lot of, a lot of what-ifs in there, so.
Lot of discussion on the buffer zone, how they're going to fund that, how we, how much money each county's going to get. Is it going to go by the miles of digits that they have, or how, they're not quite certain how that's going to be funded yet. Other than that, I guess Grant covered it. I went to Hager Township last night, very, very satisfied with our, with things that are going in the county and stuff like that, and meaning as far as the roads and stuff like that. And last year, we had some problems there, but I think it's really cleared up, and they're very happy with it. So, I also met with, as I mentioned before, I met with a farmer last night on the road conditions and stuff like that, and went very good. Other than that, I would recommend June 7th meeting, move it to 10 o'clock. There's some, there is safety, safety thing, or community safety update that's going to be given by some of our leaders of the sheriff department and police department. And I would recommend that we move our June 7th meeting to 10 o'clock.
So, move it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's taken care of. And with that, well, I guess, yeah, Kathy Anderson had a retirement on last Tuesday, I guess I attended that too, so. And I met with Ryan yesterday. Very good. That's it.
Well, no, Mr. Chair, should I go ahead?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, one item that you guys approved maybe a year and a half ago or two years ago. Remember the art, former art trail, the Agassi Recreational Trail that runs north from Yulin in that area? They, they came and asked for an additional $10,000 because of the, oh, some of the conditions of the work that had been done were not paid for, and they were fighting it and different things along those lines. That was really spurred the idea that we should probably discontinue the membership of the Agassi Recreational Trail. And you, you're, the board sponsored a, a withdrawal proposal there, and I think your chair has been representing you on that. Well, of that $10,000 that you approved to give them, we were just informed, Dave just called me yesterday afternoon, that we did receive a check, or are receiving a check for $8,686 of that. So, everything has been squared away now on that. That payment, his final payment has been made, and the lawsuits.
The lawsuits are gone.
Everything is gone, yep. Isn't that what you found out in that meeting?
I feel, I think our area, as far as Clay County, we're, we really should be out, but I think Norman County still has some.
Still has a little.
Situations where they got settled.
Yeah.
As far as who owns what and stuff like that. But I think as far as Clay County, I think we're done.
Yep.
So, this is what the bill was that we owe 86?
No.
We got.
We got actually a refund back.
We, we paid it, but they applied for a grant, and they got a grant for being hard.
Yep.
They're giving most of the money back.
Yep, so we got most of that back. And then frankly, they came back a second time asking for more money, and you guys denied that. And then maybe that's the issue that really spurred moving forward with that. So, I think that's some, finally, some good news in that heart show. Of course, there's been a lot of good news in that. We've done, your chair's done a lot of work in that area, so that's good. I met with Joe Olson. He had some personnel issues to deal with, and we kind of got things squared away there. We had some issues over a weekend here. I guess that was last weekend, but kind of came to a head here last week, and we got that straightened away. We had a conference call with the architect and looking at reducing some of the space and different things. So, they're going to bring some of those ideas that they've been working on to the next committee to, to help reduce the costs. And maybe it's a million or $2, they've, they're going to be suggesting some changes on it. So, some real positive things, I think, came out of that call. Tim Magnuson and I met with Clay County Abstract, referenced some property issues last Thursday or Wednesday, somewhere along that line. And it was in dealing with the property issues. The title on property that closed on Friday, we got that cleared up. So, another issue that, that could have delayed things, and it went quite smoothly. Commissioner Mojo reported on the Joint Powers Committee that we met. But my understanding is that on May 16th at 10 o'clock on Monday, we're going to have a.
Press conference.
Press conference over here in regards to that. And I don't know if he mentioned that or not. I didn't hear.
I didn't mention the press conference.
Okay, okay, at 10 o'clock. By the school was, and that would probably be for the, the committee members, yeah. And we had a management team meeting on Thursday morning. We had a presentation from Jen, Jean Henninger with MCIT. She lasted, that lasted about an hour, hour and 10 minutes or so. We covered all the aspects of the insurance and, and most of the department heads, and then some of the representatives that deal with MCIT claims and putting the insurance on the, on the schedules and different things. We're there. I thought it was very well attended and, and a good, good training for us. Last Thursday at noon, I did make a presentation to the Moritz Lions Club in reference to the correctional law and law enforcement building over at the frying pan. And then we also had a diversion meeting on Friday and administrative advisory meeting. And just a couple things from there. The DNR press release is going to occur on May 16th, reference the EIS final draft. So, just a heads up on that. The joint powers agreement that the six entities are being asked to, to sign, right now, Clay County is scheduled for May 24th to be, to consider that JPA. That'll be after the EIS is released and things.
So, we'll have that on the agenda for the 24th.
For the 24th, yes.
And is it still version 3.5?
Ah, yes, I believe that is the most current version. So, and John will be here, I believe, that day. So, and then there's also.
Mr. Chairman, or Brian and Mr. Chairman, on that issue, I, I did get a call from John Shockley.
Rocky, John Shockley.
And of all the issues that they were trying to get everybody to agree to all these proposed changes that were out there, the one area that apparently. changes that were out there, the one area that apparently Cass County felt that because of the way their members are, they all have to be county commissioners. And if you recall, we had talked about one of ours could possibly be somebody from within one of the cities of our county. And they were asking if we would be willing just to have it be two county commissioners. And I don't think it's an overwhelming deal that it would have to be somebody from the city. But I think right now, they would like the proposal to be that it would be just two members from the county board. I don't know if there's any
That's fine. I think the reason, I think you brought that up.
I brought it up, yeah.
That there was a representation from whoever was an elected leader in that area.
Right. Yeah. And I, you know, and actually, I thought, I was even thinking more down the line, for example, whether it's, you know, Saban or something who might be closer to where some of the, you know, once this ditch is dug, there's gonna be the ongoing stuff that's gonna happen. It's gonna be, have to do more with what's in that area in terms of operations and maintenance. I thought it might be worthwhile at that, at some point, to have somebody from that area be able to be on there.
Right.
But I guess, I think, I don't have a, I told them I didn't have a problem with the two commissioners, and I told them I would bring it up here, so.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Shockley called me about that, too, and said that that was a request from Cass County
Right.
And to stay consistent
Right.
Rather than to have each little entity designing it. And frankly, some of the logic that we discussed there is that, you know, the county commissioners are elected to serve the entire county.
Right.
And, and you guys are responsible for all the voters, in the impacted area and the protected area. So that was kind of our discussion, that county. But the positive thing is, the Clay Counties have an additional representative
Right. You know, and I think if there's, just to convince, if everybody's okay with that, maybe we can just, I told them that I, I couldn't make that decision on my own.
Right.
So as long as you're, if you're all okay with that, then maybe we can let John know that, that meets the approval of the county board.
Okay. Well, I think you'll probably be discussing that specific point when he comes on the 24th, too.
But he want, he'd like to have that
Yes.
Included in the ground.
Included, right.
And my point is, if we didn't, if we wanted, if we wanted to argue it, then we should be saying it now.
Yep. Good point. Yep. Okay. Also, there's an Industry Day, June 7th. This is in regards to the diversion again at the Hilton Garden Inn. And I think it was from 8:00 to 12:30, or 8:30 to 12:00. But if you're interested, it's on their website for more information. And the Industry Day is basically a show-and-tell for the contractors that they expect to bid on it. But if you're interested in going to that
Pretty much the data, that safety thing, and our later commissioning on June 7th. Did you say June 7th?
Yes, I did. Yeah, you're correct. Yeah. It's gonna conflict with that.
And we're gonna be busy at one point.
Yeah, you are. Yeah. I met with Tom McSperry from West Central Initiative last Friday. And he visited about several issues and what's going on. But basically, his request, right now, the Clay County makes an $8,000 donation to West Central Initiative, and then you had the $7,000 that you were going into the loan fund. Well, the loan fund last year, the balance was about $300,000 in there. And you felt that you didn't need to add any more money, so you took that off last year out of the budget, $7,000. So what he was asking this year, would, would you want to entertain an increase in your $8,000 contribution? And what I told
They distributed the funds?
Yeah.
I think that was the question last year, right? That it had, the funds hadn't been distributed?
Yeah, no, that was the loan fund. That's the $7,000. This is the contribution to, that they match in several different respects. And what I told them to, I said I'd bring it up to you folks. But I said, the way it looks right now, next year's gonna be a tough year. We've got high insurance costs. We have
Because it's at $15,000 total?
It was $15,000.
Eight went to one and seven went
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eight went to, dropped to seven. Yes. So I told them that that would probably not be a real good year to be increasing it.
We've got plenty of issues.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't want to make that, that commitment without talking to you guys about it first. So, Mr. Chairman, also, yesterday when we met to go over the board meeting, we also talked with, with Tim from planning the zoning about the flood issue that we had presented to the board last time. And I think we're making progress there. We're in the stages of looking at the options of it.
I was gonna talk about that a little bit, but, yeah.
Okay, well
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Well
Some other things have come up on that trip key property.
Yeah. I think there's some good possibilities of the state sharing in, in some costs on it. And the watershed is willing to share in it, if the county's willing to share in it. But there's probably a much bigger issue that looms over this whole thing. And that is that whole area being subjected to higher flood insurance. And what Tim was suggesting is that we have it, I'd say, resurveyed, that, that whole, oh, it must be a couple square miles of area there, and request FEMA to take that out of the flood plane.
It's a lomar.
What's that?
It's a lomar there.
Yeah, right.
Eight miles by two miles.
But there's about a $75,000 cost in doing that. It would be about a four-month study to do so. So we really need to look at what our options are, and bring them down to two or three, and then try to decide.
How much money?
$75,000.
$75,000.
And even if we did that, to get a decision on whether to take, that'd probably take years. I mean, it seems like all these floodplain decisions take a long time for them to make a decision on, so.
But the thing about is, if we do the floodplain study, this trip key property may be out of the floodplains.
Right.
Okay, but then we don't
But it could take years to get that decision out of FEMA.
Well, no, but a lomar, you know, you, you go through the process. You do all the engineering work on it. It's mostly engineering work that's done. It's paperwork that's done. You hire an engineer, you go through this lomar process, then you submit it, and then FEMA, FEMA's acts pretty quickly on those lomar issues.
But
But what I'm wondering is why, why so much money? $75,000? That's
But Tim is looking to get that financed through ENR, I think, or whatever.
The lomar study?
Yeah.
Well, possibly. He wasn't real confident
No, he wasn't.
About the $75,000. The reason why the $75,000, though, is when they did their study a few years ago, they, they made some assumptions over that property. And based on their, their surveys from, by the road, the railroad dresel. And they really didn't identify going to the north for the lomar issues. So the only appeal process that you have is to go ahead and get it surveyed, like you're talking about, and then appeal it to, he thought about a four-month turnaround that they would
Well, by the time your survey is done, that could be, could be accurate. But
The question was whether they measured a lomar from the bottom of the culvert or the top of the culvert. So we're talking about three feet difference.
Well, but that, but, but your, your lomar, it, it has, it has federal rules that you have to follow, that, that the engineers know. They, so what, you know, but my, but my point is, for an individual family, because we had some lomars that were done in Oakport, we're talking two to four grand for a lomar for a property. So why, why is this $75,000?
Four miles by two miles, isn't that? There's several properties.
Ah, it's gonna be eight by two miles.
Sixteen square miles. Sixteen square miles. Oh, okay. Maybe that's why.
That's why.
Well, is there that much that's in the floodplain?
The difference is, the difference, I guess, from my perspective, and why we maybe need to expedite the trip key project, is because we screwed that up.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we're, it's
We screwed that up. So, I mean, that's, you made the comment about, well, there's several properties. Well, there is. But those other property owners aren't saying, we want out, and we can't market our, our asset because the county made a mistake.
But we may find out that we're completely out of the floodplain.
So, so what, I guess what we talked about there is, we probably had a half-hour discussion in regards to it, and feel like we have to look at what options are available to bring back to you and see the direction.
Yeah, if they're not in the floodplain, they're willing to keep the property.
They'll be able to sell it, then.
Right, they'll be able to sell.
Then, then we're out of the picture.
Then we're out of the picture. And that's, then it's a cheaper route to go.
It may be, yeah.
Because if we don't do this, we're gonna have a piece of property we can't do anything with.
And you're not gonna get anything taken out of, out of the floodplain without a lomar.
Right.
That's a letter of map revision.
Right. And even though our argument to Tim was, wasn't FEMA supposed to do this correctly? And shouldn't they be paying for it? And they said, well, yeah, they were, but they didn't. And this is the only way you can appeal it. So we'll, we'll, we'll get something more. There'll be more to
Yeah, Tim will be
Yeah. I attended Kathy's retirement, like I talked about, and missed a meeting because of it. The exit issues, we've got that scheduled then. Got some meetings on the property buyouts. We're, like I said, continuing that. The wind energy, talked about that. Also, there's a situation that Rhonda and I have been communicating on as well. And you've seen it probably in the news somewhat, but, and I won't mention the name of the facility, but up by Duluth, in that area, there's a juvenile detention facility that is really under scrutiny by the state. And there's counties that are pulling their kids out of that. And we've been talking about that. We have three county, county kids there. One was a voluntary committal that the parents have, have chosen to take out. And Rhonda is probably going to look for a different location for the two kids. But you've seen it in the news, probably. And it's affecting Clay County as well. And it's just another problem with reducing beds for juvenile facilities. So we'll need to be talking more about that and see where we're gonna go. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. One other thing, Brian, we need to have some dialogue with Maury Lanning.
Oh, yeah.
We've, we hired him on this issue, and this board has got to, has got probably a month and a half to make up our minds on any, any sort of a referendum issue, for it to be on the ballot in time. And so we really need to have some serious discussions and real soon with Mr. Lanning on making sure that we have all the correct information so that this board can then make that decision and move on.
Yeah. Yes, I agree, Mr. Chair. And what we had kind of decided early on was looking at the legislature, and things would have to happen pretty fast after the legislature. I think we're probably out of the bonding picture of it, so it wouldn't hurt to turn the heat up on that. I think Lori does have the language for the ballot pretty secure.
Well, yeah.
But we have to pass a resolution and things as well, so.
There's, you know, and it's, Commissioner Mojo, he was even asked, he's mentioned it at a previous meeting, you know, what's, what's on the ballot question? So we want to make sure we know what has to be on the ballot question.
Yeah, yeah.
What the ballot question might have on it, and what we go to
The legislature.
Legislature with might be two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need to know all of those things. And we need to know them real soon.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, what the bonding bill does or doesn't do should have no impact on what we need to know, other than the fact that we would change our dollar number if we got money from the state. But, but all the criteria that we need to have
Yeah.
To make sure that we're telling the public everything correctly in the process, we need that soon.
Right. And I think, I think we have most of that, but we just need to
But I mean, but, but we, we, we've hired Mr. Lanning, and we haven't gotten a report
Right.
That, that everybody up here can feel comfortable with.
Right, yeah.
So that's what I'm asking. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.